Good evening and welcome to the Milford Select Board Meeting of March 25, 2024. Thank you for letting us into your home. Before we begin our agenda, I will entertain a motion for the signing of the warrant.
Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the warrant of the minute we approve the warrant, excuse me, of March 11, 2024.
Excellent.
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
And make that unanimous as well. Thank you so much. Also, would entertain a motion to approve the regular session of our Select Board Meeting on March 11, 2024.
Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the regular minutes, March 11, 2024.
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
Get unanimous as well. Thank you. Next, approval of the executive session minutes that we had on March 12, 2024.
Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the executive session minutes, March 12, 2024.
And I would second that as well, Mr. Chairman.
Make that unanimous as well. Thank you.
Chairman, if I could suggest that we take Brian Long out of turn, public transportation, because the budgets might take a few minutes more.
Sure. Sure. And where Brian's already here? Sure. Brian, can you come forward? Let me see. Can I find that? Okay. We thank you, Tom. Okay, we have our Public Transportation Advisory Committee Chair, Brian Long, who will present to us and provide an update of the in-town bus transportation system. Brian, thank you for taking the time to speak to us. And like I said, this is a very important committee that we do have here. Public transportation is very important in our town, you know, and not only helps with the congestion that we have on our roads and whatnot, but also for those individuals who need a ride somewhere, and it would depend on transportation that's reliable. And we thank you for your service and also for your committee members as well. If you could now have the floor?
Yes, thank you very much for having me. And that's a great lead-in. So this has been nothing but a success so far.
Great.
Since the start of 2016. And other than the blip of COVID, the ridership numbers were on a great path forward. They've rebounded since, as you have obviously seen with the numbers that we've presented.
Yeah.
And very coincidentally, we just crossed over to 100,000 riders.
Wow.
Since it kicked off in August of 2016.
Yeah.
So I did not plan that. It just happened to be the case, so that's good. You know, you could, we could really dig into the numbers if you wanted to, but you know, I just wanted to give kind of a broad, strokeful, you know, view here of what we've seen and, you know, obviously some pretty rudimentary charting here. But, you know, we typically see pretty consistently well over 1,000 riders a month. And, you know, other than again, that April 2020 to January 2021 timeframe, it's been solid since then and even before then. So we haven't quite hit the 2K figure yet per month, but we've got close to it a few times.
Yeah.
But overall, it's been pretty good, and so much so that our service is actually increasing, starting in April. So we're going to get two more loops in the evening. So I forget exactly what time the route stopped initially, something in the 8 o'clock timeframe, so now it's going to go for another two loops through town, so up to about 10 o'clock or so.
Wow.
I did send the draft schedule over to the town administrator.
Excellent.
So once that is all done, we'll get that over. So there is growth already, and that came directly from the MWRTA, which by the way, they are phenomenal partner to work with. They communicate directly with me in terms of kind of liaising information. So if they have suggestions on route changes, schedule changes, anything like that, you know, they come over, ask for suggestions, input things along those lines. Just one example, the courthouse, prior to the pandemic, the courthouse was stopped that was utilized quite a bit. Since then, it has not been. So that's actually going to come off the route moving forward in April. And reason being simply is now the bus can go from Shaw's and just go straight up Highland Street to the high school versus having to stay left on 140, go to the courthouse, pull in, turn around, and come back. So adjustments like that happen. That's just how it functions when it comes to bus routes and things along those lines.
Sure.
There's always tweaks and things like that. So but that's just one example of kind of those things that we talk about. And actually, too, something to point out, over the course of Q1 of 2024, the bus was actually free for anybody who wanted to ride. They had to have your, they call it the cash card. So it used to be the Charlie Card was the old one. So the service was actually free. That was something they did last year as well, so they brought that back. So for three months, ending, I guess, at the end of this week, the bus has been free for folks to be able to ride. So that's a trend that's happening across the country. Municipalities are offering services for free to help increase ridership and things like that. You know, it's just, it's a value add, if you will, to the communities, so. Another area, just to highlight real quick, bus stops, shelters, benches. So we are, we're getting benches from the MWRTA. They're working on painting them and fixing them up, so we're going to get some benches that we can ultimately install on our own soon enough. But we also, through our highway department and the work of Scott Chrisafoli, our highway surveyor, have applied for a grant through the Shared Streets and Spaces Program that will help us install some benches and shelters through town. So, you know, that's part of a visibility thing as it relates to the bus. It's one thing to have a sign on a post that says "Bus Stop Here," but if you have a bench that's associated with that, a shelter associated, it really brings that visibility and advertisement, if you will.
And the aesthetics, too.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Very good.
So just another thing that we're working on there. So one thing I did want to talk about specifically was the committee itself. As of right now, we have not been able to meet in quite a long time. We do not have enough membership to be able to meet.
There's usually four members, but you only have three right now, right?
I have three, yeah.
Yeah.
And so, you know, the committee has, was doing really good work. You know, we're reviewing ridership on a monthly basis. We've been there for the purposes of dealing with figuring out stops and things like that. All the stuff I've kind of already laid out that I'm liaising right now. But really, from my perspective, I'm not sure that the committee is necessary. The bus system runs itself pretty much, you know, the MWRTA again is a great partner. And, you know, if we're not going to have membership or if there's not enough interest in there being members for a committee, it doesn't really make a ton of sense. So I actually have three suggestions related to that. One would be to disband it and then take that responsibility and put it under the town administrator or the new economic development position that was approved. The job description was approved a couple of weeks ago. That would be one suggestion. Another would be to disband the committee and then appoint an actual liaison person. Again, kind of functioning the role that I've been in since we haven't been able to meet as a committee. Or frankly, appoint new members and get that. And I don't know if there has been anything related to talent bank applications with interest, so. But, you know, for future consideration, those would be my three suggestions on what to do with the committee moving forward. And frankly, I'm not sure the committee is necessary. I do think we need a liaison in some form or fashion, but I'm not sure the committee is really necessary to move forward.
There's something we can speak with, you know, Rick, and go over that.
Yeah, and I'll look at the talent bank just to see if there is interest.
See if there is interest and whatnot, if not, look at the other two alternatives.
Typically, as we get them, though, we do send them to the chair, so if we haven't sent you anything.
Yeah. Yeah.
I'm guessing there aren't, but I'll double check.
Yeah. Yeah. So but in conclusion, you know, as long as we continue to advocate the route and advertise, you know, this should continue to grow. Obviously, with the expansion of, you know, a couple more loops a day, we should again continue to see ridership increase. As Mike, you experienced, we've met with them before and we've talked about adding another loop and how to kind of increase service, so that's something that still could be on the table to talk about. But again, this has been successful so far, and I don't see that changing. I think it will continue to grow with ridership numbers and be a positive for this.
Yeah, no, I can see that, too. Like I said, it's definitely a benefit to the community, and we appreciate that. I'd like to ask any of my colleagues if they have any questions or concerns or comments they want to ask Brian.
I just think the numbers, I was talking to Brian outside, and I just think the numbers speak for themselves. I think they grew a lot quicker than I anticipated. And when you look at the use of 100,000 over seven and a half years as you're just, you know, climbing and we're adding, for people that don't have transportation, this is really a real, real asset. And then the other side of it is, you mentioned, Mr. Chairman, is the issue of people, you know, are we taking commuters off the road? So we're reducing people that want to get, you know, over to the train. So I was impressed when I looked at the numbers. And yes, you know, COVID, you saw that little blip.
Yeah.
But boom, it came right back.
Sure.
And I think as people start to go back, companies start to say to them, "Come back to the city." You know, are you going to fight the Trump hike? Are you going to, you know, take advantage of sitting back and reading the newspaper? So, you know, I really, it's impressive, and I appreciate you putting this together.
It was an anecdote. I'll mention that. Thanks.
I think some of the things that you're proposing may make a lot of sense of just you have a liaison that works, you know, and not necessarily, it could be someone outside of town government, it could be someone inside of town government.
Yeah.
Either way, it's a measure of the person's interest in, like you, you know, and they're going to make a difference. This is impressive, and I thank you for it.
Michael?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Brian, I'd like to again say to you and the committee, thank you very much. But the first question I would have is, the board has a designee on the board at the Transportation Authority. That happens to be me. So there does seem to be, I sit here this evening, and I'm like, this seems to be a giant overlap, you know, in what the committee is doing or charge their responsibilities and basically what I do, sitting there, and I can tell you that the MWTRA is thrilled with the town of Milford and is always looking to make some kind of adjustments to make the service even better. So I agree with you. I kind of sit here and say, well, do we in fact, and we'll discuss this as a board, is there in fact a need for a committee now that it's up and running and, you know, is it something from the board perspective that can be handled? But I don't want to take away from the work that you and the committee has done over the years, getting over the hurdles of getting in, and I'm very well aware of some of those hurdles and, you know, they're very impressed and thankful for everybody, you know, working with them to get through them. You know, yeah, the numbers, you know, I was just in a meeting last month, and, you know, they're very impressed and they're happy with the direction that things are going. One of the things that they did mention to me is they're looking at, one of the concerns that's coming in is the length of time, let's just say, using an example, you get dropped off at stop and shop, and the amount of time it takes for the bus to make the loop now and come back and pick you up. And now they're looking at possibly running a bus in one direction and a bus in the other direction to cut down on that time. So, you know, they are willing to work with us to continue to enhance the service to the point of, you know, they're looking at, you know, new buses, natural gas, you know, all different kinds of handicapped accessibility. So they're well, they're well aware of, you know, their ridership, you know, the members that are using the ridership in all of their communities. So, you know, it definitely is, it's a great service and it's a needed service. So again, thank you. But as a board, I think to Brian's point, that's something we need to look at because there may be some overlap and there may not be, you know, maybe a liaison right from the board of selectmen to their board would be sufficient. And it's something we need to look at and take your recommendation.
Yeah, I don't mean to put my committee out of a job, but.
No, 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 no.
What makes sense. And the committee was, it was the right thing to do at the time.
When you get it going.
And, you know, it's just, it's, again, become so self-sufficient that I don't think that.
Right.
A board is required.
Right.
To provide that advisory. I think, you know, it's just more of a matter of communication back and forth.
Right.
And, you know, I think that's something an individual.
Mainstream it more.
Yeah, yeah, within in-town government or separate of it, so.
Right. Very good.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time. Thanks. It was a very good report. Thank you. Okay, here we go, right to Robbie Wright. There are no public hearings today either, so we've got to skip that as well. So we'll go with our regular scheduled appointment, which would be with our police chief, Robert Tizino, who will be presenting to us to review his fiscal year '25 budget. Chief, thank you for your time coming here and your explanation of your budget. Thanks.
I feel like I've been here all day.
You sure have.
So what you have in front of you is, you know, it's one piece of paper, but it's actually come from many, many, many hours, you know, with Zach, myself, my administrative assistant, the people that helped Zach. So this is not something that was put together, you know, haphazardly or easily this year. I think this was pretty, pretty trying, to say the least. Knowing the town's, you know, shortfall falls coming up in the 2025 fiscal year, I know it's a tough time. Zach's been on top of this. He's really ahead of the curve and is trying to mitigate how are we going to make up for the, you know, deficit drop from the state? And I know that's been a big deal for us. But when you look at this, you have to understand, as we get into this, you know, Milford has grown, and growth hurts. There's no other way to say it. Growth hurts. It taxes everything. And just to put things into, you know, perspective, you know, for myself and for the fire department, you know, police, fire, EMS, we have to understand something. So we make arrangements to accommodate, let's say, let's keep it low, let's say 100 new children into the school system. Okay? We make those accommodations. Well, what you have to understand is those 100 children live in 100 residences in Milford that have 100 sets of parents, that have possibly 100 other older brothers or sisters that don't even attend the school. And my point being is, we've recognized the influx on the social level, the school developmental level, which I agree 100%, but there's a certain responsibility on the police, fire, and EMS that is just not being matched with our services. Case in point, when it comes to the Best Western Hotel, since January, we've been there 60 times. 60 times in the response. That increases our services. Okay? Between police, fire, and EMS, we've been down there 60 times since January. That's a lot. Okay? Our traffic, you know, I think if, you know, we had a nickel for every time we had to respond to an accident, myself and the fire department, the resources that that takes, you know, and we're not even talking about, you know, thank God, a lot of catastrophic accidents. I think the Milford infrastructure does very well at mitigating those, that we don't have a lot of fatalities and serious injury accidents. But accidents nonetheless, traffic complaints, parking complaints, our sexual assaults through the roof. And obviously, I can't speak exactly about them. There's a certain, you know, degree of anonymity that goes into responding to sex assaults, but through the roof. And a sex assault investigation, you know, to give it some context, that doesn't happen in a shift. Okay? That sometimes takes months, and there are certain people that have to be certified to intake that type of investigation. So the person hours on the policing side in a sexual assault investigation, you know, one investigation, you could be talking about hundreds of hours just in one sex assault. They have to be handled a certain way by certain officers.
And that's taking that, those officers from doing their typical daily job.
Absolutely. And putting us behind the A-ball, okay? And, you know, thank God for your family services unit, which, you know, luckily is heavily funded by a grant and the OBOA abatement money. But, you know, Milford is one of the few agencies, and the fire chief knows this, that we've gone, we've cut our overdoses down to almost 50%. That's unheard of. That's a model not just for the, you know, county and state, but that's something the country should look at of what we've done here in Milford. Okay? The long-term follow-up, the long-term care, the long-term helping people deal with their disease process, you know, that's being done here in Milford, and we're seeing dividends in that. But that takes a lot. Thank God that we have a division that just handles that, but they go from call to call to call family resources. And the couple of things that we tried to mitigate, you know, Zach and I moving forward with this budget, is the violent crime. I think that we have some interesting cases that have come up as of lately. I mean, you just read the paper and watch the news. We've had some interesting things happen here. Those cases take a lot of person hours. Okay? Those cases are not solved in a day. The overtime for a serious crime like an armed robbery, an attempted homicide, or i.e. God forbid, a homicide, you're talking $25,000, $20,000 like nothing. When you're traveling the state and sometimes multi-state, when you're working with federal agencies, try to button these things up, it takes a lot, and that has to reflect unfortunately in the budget. There's no easy way to get around that. And with that, you know, we have a detective division that we could put another three detectives in, and you wouldn't even notice.
Right.
That's how busy they are, you know? And I'm not trying to tap dance on any other municipality, but a lot of these drug investigations, they're coming out of Milford, and it's our detectives that are running the gauntlet and buttoning these things up. I'm talking big seizures, big drug investigations, and obviously, I don't want to speak too much to that, but these are investigations of drugs that are killing people. So what's the worth, you know, when you have a detective that works with an agency, a federal agency, you know, what's the worth of paying the person hours for that person to go and work that case? There isn't a dollar value, right? We're saving lives. That's what we're doing. Okay? The other increases that you'll notice in there is there's stuff like reoccurring. The interesting thing about the reoccurring line there is, this is something that, sure, the police department manages, but it's something the whole town uses, like the reverse 911. That's a very expensive system, and that has gone up considerably. But what you have to understand is the police use it the least, actually. It's a great tool for us to have in case of an emergency, but what has been, you know, in my, you know, tenure, what have we used the majority of that system for? School notifications, border health notifications, election notifications, you know.
Snow.
Snow emergencies, thank you. I drew a blank there.
Water.
Water, snow emergencies, stuff like that. But this is something that the police department mitigates, and, you know, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention Chris George, Director of IT, just someone who really, really pulled us from the flames with all our IT through town. But this is something we pay, so we need to keep that in context. And then we'll talk about the dispatches. I mean, the fire chief is here with me tonight, and he'll tell you, we have a dispatch center that is bar none. I mean, this group of men and women, you know, I can say with 100% certainty, are the best of the best. That's something that's in this budget, but again, that's police, fire, and EMS. That is not something that's just indicative to the police department. That's something that runs the whole town. You call because there's a loose dog, it comes into this center. You call because, God forbid, your family member is suffering a medical emergency and we get the fire department, that's this number. Weather emergencies, everything, that's this number. They mitigate all that there. So there's increases there that we have, and we recently settled a contract with them, and we have a supervisor's position. I know that myself and the fire chief are excited about someone to work with that speaks the language of dispatch, and we just got that approved, and I know the board, we spoke about that before. But that's in here for an increase as well, and I think that's going to bring us even into the next level. Working with Chris George, the fire chief, myself, this supervisor is going to have the talent, because they've spent their life in dispatch, and the know-it-all, how to implement the things that we want to implement moving forward. So that was a big part of it. Then you get down into, I spoke about the training already, but then you get down to, I mean, I spoke about the overtime, I'm sorry. The projected degree reimbursement program, you know, we're very lucky here. We, you know, pay for talent as well as we should. These are officers that are finishing up master's degrees and other degrees. That's part of the contract. Again, the town will be getting some of this money back if people don't meet the degree initiative. We're trying to hit the bullseye with that, right? So we project that people are going to have so many credits, and they're going to get the added bonus percentages into their pay. So this is a guesstimate, the best we can, but I suspect that the town's going to be getting some of that money back. And then you go down again, and the uniform allowance, that's contractual. Those are contracted items that every year negotiated. That hasn't changed much, and we don't anticipate a change. Getting back up to the top real quick, we might have a tentative deal for a one-year contract with the local mascot 218 moving forward, so those percentages might rise a little bit. And Zach can speak to that in a second. You get down to the bottom and it says "training." I'm, you know, I'm here to tell you that we are one of the best trained police departments. And moving forward, just to give you a context of why training has increased, so the active shooter trainings for the entire department, the regulations for them have changed. It's not a one-day training anymore. It's a multiple-day training, and we have to reflect that in the cost. Money well spent, believe me. And I think that with the post mandates, the Police Officers Standings and Training Commission, the best thing that we can do, the best way to serve the community is the training of its officers, the excellence of its officers. And that's reflected in my training budget. You know, it's very robust, and I think it has to be to meet the needs and the changing culture and dynamic of the town.
And that's something that's mandated, too.
It's mandated that we have certain trainings.
Right.
You know, we do go above and beyond here in Milford, but I think to do that, we're cutting off our nose to spite our face.
Right.
This isn't training in how to go and, you know, do a traffic stop. This is training how to have interaction, you know, de-escalation training.
Sure.
And, you know, multicultural training, help integrate people with mental health and wellness for the patrol officers, you know? That's the kind of training that we're really getting into. And some of the specialized training for our detective units, you know? As crime evolves, so does the criminal. Okay? You're not dealing with, you know, there are some people that work in the criminal world that I'm like, if you applied this to anything else, you'd be, you know, I don't know an attorney, Rick, that's not as likely. But the talents of some of these people, we have to change with the times, and that costs training. And then moving down, you know, through our budget, I think what we did is we cut certain things, believe me, we cut gas. Gas is always a shot at the bullseye. We cut gas a little bit. Gas is pretty simple. What we don't use, we give right back. We don't spend it someplace else. That's kind of a door that swings both ways. So we try to make our best guess with gas moving now forward. Police gear, it went up a little bit. Why? Because everything went up.
Yeah.
You know, and I'll argue that that $5,000 increase is very lean, very lean, with the way things have increased. Moving down, again, we get back to recurring because there was another jump. All right? Again, I've already received bills for that reverse calling system that is, you know, $3,000, $4,000 more, and we do that periodically. We pay it in installment, you know? Thankfully, it's not one lump. And I'll argue that that number is a little low, actually, but you know what? You know, my belief is we can make it work. And then you get down to the next bigger item, right? And this is, it says, "replacement for the vehicles." Certainly, it was the wisdom of the Finance Committee some time ago, and I know it was Chief Al Walfen at the time, they built it in that we replace our vehicles. You know, let's talk about that for one second. You talk about savings. We're taking one of our best vehicles, we're going to reletter it, retrofit it, and we're giving it to the fire department. So there's a $40 savings to the town that's going to the fire department. It's a good vehicle. It's a vehicle that they can use, I don't know if it's used for inspections or weather cases, but we're going to change over the lights for them and make that a fire vehicle. So again, you know, there's a savings there to the town. Like I said, it's the two teams working together here, you two different departments. The other vehicles that are in there, and it's a one-time increase, Zach and I worked with this, and we actually, you know, just spoke with Al on the phone, and it's a one-time increase for this year. You know, we're going to be replacing K-9 vehicles, we're going to be replacing special operations vehicles. Those special operations vehicles have been going for six years, almost six years.
I was going to ask you how long.
Yeah.
Six years.
Yeah.
I was going to ask you how long, yeah, six years. And that's a lot of work.
Yeah, the special operations team, you know, has come under some fire as of lately. I had some people, you know, I'll just say talk out of school if you will, and make some assumptions about this team. But in the last 13 months, I've sent you all a quick breakdown that I had. They assisted in 7,400 calls for service, not sitting around waiting for something to happen. Special operations team is not a SWAT team. All right, I don't know where that came into the mix. Somebody said that during a meeting. That's not the case. And, you know, where do they spend the vast majority of their time? At the schools. And they don't spend a lot of their time at the schools in this paramilitary organization. They help traffic it in and out. They address concerns in and around the school, these speeding complaints around the school. Who do you think is doing that? It's the special operations team that's doing all that. Why? Because we don't have any other officers available to do that. So this is a good use of resources. They're in and around the schools. They're addressing the complaint. They've written over 300 citations in the past 13 months in and around addressing these complaints. So this is a very, very, very big part of what we do here. I mean, 10 years ago, people were booking flights to go to Brockton High School to emulate what they had going on in Brockton. Now you have citizens calling for the National Guard to come in there. What happened? I'll tell you what happened. Is there was a lack of presence, a lack of stability. Recently, some Framingham students were asked, it was in the paper, some Framingham students were asked if they felt safe at school and they said no. Well, you're not getting that here at the Milford school system. And that's because you have a collaborative effort between the school administrators and the police department. And they work so well together. And this team that we have assigned to go to all these functions, right, basketball games, football games, different events, they're there. Okay, but what you don't hear about is the medical calls that they go on, all the other things they do. And, you know, I'll ask the naysayers, what is it worth when, you know, you have a family member who suffers from dementia and Alzheimer's, someone who's, and this happens, I'm being vague for a reason if I missed about, someone who is a World War II veteran that walks out of their house not dressed for the weather at 3:00 in the morning and the special operations team calls up and puts a drone up and finds the poor individual, you know, what's that worth? Okay, and that goes to save the K-9, you know. Our K-9s are credited with searching and finding numerous people in the area as well as Milford. And obviously, these vehicles, you know, kudos to the team members and people on the K-9 units. They take great care of these vehicles, but six years old, you know, do the math. They're beat. They need to be rotated up. So that's your budget in a breakdown. And, you know, I know it's not cheap and these are tough times, but I'll tell you, sitting next to Zach and the fire chief behind me, we beat these numbers up to the point of ad nauseam.
Yeah, I can see that, you know, because I was speaking to Zach earlier and Rick about you know, various budgets and whatnot and, you know, what was proposed and what you actually need is reflected here.
Absolutely.
You know, I mean, you can tell a lot of hard work was into it, a lot of time with Zach and yourself to come up with these numbers. And Chief, I can tell you right now, it was well explained. Any questions that I had that I wrote down that I wanted to ask, you answered it. I was just going to ask one of my colleagues if they have any questions or concerns with the budget.
I have a familiarity with this budget.
Yes, I know that.
The tuition reimbursement goes back to the town fully. So you're budgeting $75,000. The way it works is if I go from one degree to the other, whatever percentage I gain, half of that comes back against whatever the town helped me pay the tuition. So ultimately, you end up paying back fully. So the town recoups every penny of that. There's no question about it. Someone leaves and it's worked out, whether we take it from, and they agree from their retirement, or I unfortunately had a situation where it was going to become, we sue you because you're going to pay us back. It's to encourage offices to increase their education, become better at what they do. And it costs us nothing other than, yes, they get an incentive because they deserve it with the education that they have. As far as increasing, when we look at Post, he has no say in Post. So to be clear, Post tells the local police departments now, here's the training you're going to do and whether you like it or not, and you might not like the training they're doing, but by the nature, let's say, you know, when we, when we talk about the training in schools and, you know, some bad situations might happen. Well, bad situations might happen and that's what Post is obligated to make sure. If it does, we're not looking at a Texas situation. We're looking at a situation where, and here in Milford, I'll say, because we did active shooter training, not just schools, Waters, Benjamin Moore, we've been in and out of businesses in this community for years. Why? They wanted it. They wanted it because they don't want a horror show. It's not a SWAT team. To stand up a SWAT team, and you see that if you look at different situations that occur across the country, you're looking at an hour, 45 minutes at best. And you might get four, you might get six. They're coming from other communities to come here to support us. Yes, we have people that are on the team. What we build with special ops is that stopgap measure. Here are people, they have the training. So we've trained them frankly, in this town, to the same level as every other police officer. What we've done is we've given them equipment that's theirs. It's specialized them. Every police car in this town has equipment. The vest that they wear every day is not going to stop someone with a rifle. You go in, the person has a rifle, you're in trouble as a police officer. We have a vest in every crew, so that's a tactical vest. Those offices, the special ops, it's how do we get them here quick if they're not on duty? They all live in town or they live in the area. So as a stopgap measure to get someone here to do the right thing, you know, and you can't say, oh, it's not going to happen to me. If we all thought that way, none of us would have insurance on our homes. We wouldn't have fire insurance. It's never going to happen to me. You would have insurance in your cars other than the state tells you you have to have it because you're never going to crash. And you wouldn't have life insurance because you're going to live to be like me 120. So you have to keep in mind when you're looking at this training that he's obligated to do things by the state, by Post. He does not have a say. But you know what? He's obligated to every single resident of this community to do the right thing and to think outside the box that he and his staff have the ability to accomplish things that might occur, you know. And you know what? If they don't.
And things that have it.
That's why you buy insurance.
That's how you plan too, what happened in the past.
Insurance isn't going to breathe life into you though. That's the difference. When you look at his increases, I mean, he speaks to you about, you know, you're talking $30,000 on that training line. That's $2,500 a month. I mean, if you work it out, I think we can afford that to be safe. You work your way down, the chief talks to you about gasoline, you know, and he took off $20,000. And that is a tricky line item. You know, look, you go to the gas station, one day it's $299, then it's $295 and the next day it's $325. You know, so if someone else can figure that out better than him, and as he said, if I go over, and that was always the agreement I had with FinCom and with the finance director, if I go over my estimate, you have to give me the money. But if I come under, I'm going to give you back the money. I'm not going to expend it, you know. So it's no different than the traffic lights. If you look at the traffic lights, $57,000. If someone crashes into one box that controls the lights, you know, those gray boxes that we all want to see painted, you know, with the cultural council, you're looking at $40,000 today, you know. So if you don't catch the insurance company, and that's the same argument and the same thing that I always worked with FinCom, hey, look, if I stay within that, you know, I'm blessed. If I don't, you have to help me out. In other words, I can't find the insurance company, the truck that hit it or whatever. I work my way down to police gear. We're talking $5,000. $5,000 to make sure that they have some equipment that they need. I work my way down to recurrent equipment, you know, it's $13,000, but if you look at what was expended in '23.
Yeah, it's over $6,000.
It's actually a reduction of $6,000, you know. So he's balancing things and he's hoping he comes in at the right thing. The special ops, look, we entered into it six years ago, seven years ago, when the decision was made and it was made at town meeting as well. And we said, we would not come forward as we do with the other cruises. We would not come forward as we do with the other equipment, with the exception of that equipment which expires on its own. Any of the vests that they have expire five years. Five years. That's it. Have to give them a new one. Regular vests that the offices wear, half is paid by the feds and half by the state. We don't face any of that cost. The tactical vests we do. Any of the long weapons, you're in a position of replacing barrels, you know, replacing parts. And we know that's coming up. And if you're training with the weapon, you're using it, you're going to exhaust it, you have to replace it. So we knew this was coming. This isn't something that got pulled out of thin air. And I agree with the chief. You know, some of these vehicles, the costs have gone way up. And, you know, Michael, you were in that business. You understand that better than I. But that's just the basic vehicle. We all know, you go out and buy a car today, you pay a lot more.
And you need all the safety equipment too.
Now you have to side adding. And you take a K-9 car and the things you have to put in there to make sure, you know, that that car is air-conditioned, that there's a means that that officer, if he wants to release that dog, he can do a remote leave. There's a lot of factors. I mean, air-conditioned when the officer's away from the car for the comfort of the dog, right? You don't want to leave a dog in a hot car. So there's a lot of costs that come into play. And I think the chief has really worked it down and broken it out very, very well. And I just wanted to give my little bit of experience in that vein, that I think he's come in really, if, to be candid with you, I think he's come in under.
I think he did.
Ultimately, where he's going to end up. I know that he'll work within the numbers, but I know he's going to have to work to stay within these numbers.
Thank you, Tom. You confirmed what we already know. That was very nice. Good. Michael?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Chief, as always. You know, I think if I may start with training and the importance of training, and let's talk real life. So a few years ago at Milford High School, there was a situation during a Special Olympics ceremony out on the football field where they accidentally forgot to let the hall, the guard at the front door know that one of the Patriots was coming to give the awards away to the children. And unfortunately, so he came into the kiosk and said, hi, I'm so-and-so, I'm from the Patriots, I'm here to give the awards away. And the person in the kiosk said, that's nice, nice to meet you. And he said, well, I'm here to give the awards away. And she said, oh, that's nice. I don't know you're coming. He said, well, he said, I'm here to give the awards away in the field. Well, the bottom line of it was because of the training that that individual got from the Milford Police Department and the security people that work in the school department, because that person, no matter who it was, didn't have what was necessary to get into that school, they weren't getting in. And it's to the point where they finally called down to the field, somebody from Special Olympics came up and was all apologies. And the gentleman from the Patriots said, don't apologize to me. This is amazing. That person could have hit that buzzer. I could have been in this school and been a real problem. So the point I tell that story is, well, how do you put a value on expense on training when it saves lives? And all you have to do is turn your TV on. And to be honest with you, it's disheartening. Thousands of people went to a concert in Russia and as of this morning, 137 of them didn't come home. How do you, how can you put a value on the training that saved the thousands of other people? You can't. You can't. And I've said to you many times, the chairman and I used to say, and we sat on the school committee, my job, and I can only speak for me, my job is not to go and tell you how to run the police department. I wouldn't know the first thing to do. But my job is to find you the tools that you need to run that department, to keep the citizens in this community safe, or as safe as we can keep them. Does that cost money? Yes. And, you know, we just valued Rick to our point. We just valued our population just recently at what, 30,000?
Just about, yeah.
Just about 30,000. So you speak about the increase, but, and I just had this conversation. Somebody said the other day, well, what do you mean you got 44, 45 police officers? That's what you had 10 years. You know, well, it's time that we step up and say, yes, is it expensive? But again, to go back to what you said earlier, how do you put a value on a human life? And we, we as a board, the three of us, you know, and other departments in this community have a responsibility. People put us in these chairs for a reason. And one of those reasons is to provide them with the safety that they deserve within this community. And it's our job to do that. And, you know, and so I, I look at the expense of training and I say, to me, you can never train enough. I dealt with it in my own business on a much different aspect, but you could never train enough. You could never train enough. And your line of work and the chief, fire chief, you can never train enough, enough. You know, and like I say, it's sad to say, but all you got to do is turn on the TV and it's right there. You know, and to Tom's point, the former chief, the cost of vehicles, I know for a fact, if you take the same vehicle today and build it versus pre-COVID, on average is over $8,000, same vehicle. Okay? And then add in the increases that the manufacturers charge every year because of the cost of labor and all these other things, but just the COVID epidemic, having to deal, do business within that has increased the same vehicle, identical vehicle, over $8,000. So, and now you're building police vehicles, you're building fire vehicles, you know, you're not building a vehicle that runs a sovereign shop, you know. And so by the time you equip them, are they costly? Yes. But I go back to, I go back to, they can't do their job because we don't give them the equipment that they need, the job to take care of the citizens of this. There's something wrong. And so I think that, first of all, I commend you on what you've done. And I agree with Tom. I look at the gasoline budget and I go, well, wait a minute. In the last two weeks, gasoline has fluctuated from $299 to $339. Today it's back down to $320. Well, how do you budget to that? You know, you shoot an arrow and you hope that you're, you know. So I commend you, you know, for looking at that. But at the end of the day, is it a lot of money? Yes. I'm not going to deny it. But if it's what we need to provide the services, the safety to the citizens of this community, then I feel as a board member, and I'm only one, I feel that I have a responsibility to back you and put my respect in you, which I do, and give you the tools that you need to run that department properly.
Mr. Weoffield, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good job.
I would be remiss without, you know, mentioning Zach and like he's.
Absolutely.
May I?
Yes.
All right. So what does all this mean? So overall, we're at a 10.6% increase. However, we just talked about the one-time. However, we just talked about the one-time cost of the four additional vehicles, which represents about a 5% increase. So that will be expected to be pulled out next year. So we're really talking about a 5.6% increase in projections at the beginning of the year, knowing trends of what public safety, police, fire may look like. We use 4.5. So we're talking about one point with all of this restructure, all of these inflationary costs and whatnot. So at this time, I'm pretty comfortable, we'll say, as Chief DeCino mentioned, we are out of contract. We may have a deal in the works. We do. We will come back to the board. But as of right now, we look pretty good.
Good.
And, you know, to let everybody know that this was redone and done.
This is not where it started, I promise you.
Like I said, beat this up, beat this down. And, you know, and to, you know, Chief O'Laughlin's point, I got to tell you what, there is some of this next year that makes me apprehensive because we're going to have to work it. You know what I mean? We're going to have to be on top of it in a big, big, big way because there is zero pork in that. But it's, you know, the town is on some hard times, and we also have a responsibility to be fiscally prudent, you know? I think that we've done a lot here with fixing things at the police department, a lot of things. And they're coming along, but I understand there's a price to have it all that.
I've asked a lot of both chiefs, and I will say they stepped to the plate.
Yeah, no, I've seen, when I was speaking to you earlier, you know, in the past few weeks too, I mean, you can see the difference from the original budgets to now. And for you, Rob, chief, it's a unique year where this is the year you need these vehicles.
Yeah. I know, if it wasn't for that.
Last year, you wouldn't have needed, you know?
Do even better. But we can't put those things off.
Why she can't?
You can't. It's just, you know, like you said, it's bad timing, and it just happened now, and it is what it is.
Good job to you, Zach.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thanks, chief.
Thank you.
Next, we have our fire chief, Mark Nelson, who will present for us to review his fiscal 25 budget. And Deputy Chief Tor, hi. Thank you for your time.
Evening, gentlemen.
I think you have, you have my budget, right?
Yes.
Did somebody say?
Yes. Yes.
All right. So we submitted two budgets, right? One, that was just taken into account contractual obligations, firefighters going into their last year of contract. And then a phased approach. So the second submittal was an increase over that contractual obligation. And that was to try to start hitting supervisors, to take effect at Bird Street. And along with that, trying to staff the ladder truck more safe and, you know, to do a better job with that. So there's, that's the difference in the two budgets. We can just get expenses out of the way. There's no increase in expenses.
I see that, yeah.
Their level in both budgets, we're talking about basically salary increases for contract, salary differences for promotions. We want to establish captains of rank that we do not currently have, and we want to promote more lieutenants, all with not increasing head count. So we're going to stay a complement of 45, which includes me, and it just does not hire new firefighters, new officers. This is basically a promotion from within the ranks. And then in order to maintain that through the year, we need to add overtime money. So that's how the staffing gets accomplished. When we get to a certain limit, we have to hire back in overtime.
Okay. Well, it's just really the increases of the salaries, chief. Like I says, you did all you could to keep the general expenses the same.
Right. We did see an expense increase on the last fiscal year. It's still tight this year, but we're going to try and get by this upcoming fiscal.
Yeah.
We feel it's more necessary to get, to get the salaries.
Get the help.
We need to get the captains and lieutenants instituted. We need to get supervisors at Bird Street.
The other thing I see here too, you have the same amount for the firefighting, for the, any additional equipment that you may need. Are you comfortable with that?
Like I said, for now, in the expenses.
Yes.
Yes, we're going to try, you know? Each year, we were usually fortunate enough to get some grants to help.
Sure, yeah. And you noticed you have in the past, you've done very well with grants.
To offset some equipment, that's helpful. And like I said, I really want to put the money towards the sales.
Oh, sure.
Just real quick, chief, I think one thing that's, and I'm sorry, I didn't.
No, that's fine.
That's important, and when you're talking about the restructure, the captains and lieutenants, and what we've had this conversation about, and what the public needs to know, and maybe they do know, but we need to highlight is that we get into a serious situation, and all of a sudden, you have two lieutenants at the same scene, and they, well, who's, who's in charge? And so by elevating, you know, and we promote, you know, without changing the head count, but we change the rank count, you know, now a captain shows up, well, the captain is, he or she is, is in charge of the scene, and that was as an authority. So just so that people understand that we're not changing the head count, we're kind of restructuring a little bit so that when we do get to a scene, we always have a commanding, you know, officer or a commanding rank at that scene, correct?
You're spot on.
Yeah.
It'll be a transition though, because we do not currently have captains in the bargaining agreement. That will take time to, you know, affect, but it'll happen. There will be a period of time where we will have two lieutenants as supervisors. But eventually, they'll transition and they'll have a captain, a lieutenant, 24/7, right? And it's, it's long overdue. It's long overdue. I know past chiefs have advocated for this. I'm fortunate enough now to be in a position to ask for it again, and feel it's really necessary.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Tom?
We discussed this previously when the chief came before us, all different scenarios. And this was a piece of a larger picture to provide the best fire EMS services that we can provide to the community. And when I say the best, I mean the most adequate, not this is extravagant by any stretch. Example, the chief presented and really sticks in my mind, and he alluded to it this evening, is the fact is that if you have the engine company from Bird Street, and they respond to a vehicle accident up on 495, and you have a fire anywhere in town, you, the ladder truck is one firefighter. You know, and that ladder truck, you get there, you have to put down the stabilizers first. It's no different than a crane, you know? We saw on the news two weeks ago, and the crane falls over. Well, the ladder truck will fall over just as easily, you know, if you make it top-heavy. So we have one person, the house is on fire, people want to get out, and he has to put down the stabilizers, or she has to put down the stabilizers, and then raise the ladder. And after you get people coming down the ladder, they have to take the hose from that ladder truck. And in my case, it's two blocks. So it's down my street and down the next side street to get to the nearest hydrant. That's just.
Time is the essence.
You're going to end up with fatalities, and, you know, we can look at the, just the house right here at Town Hall, across the street, where the dispatcher, Jay Cavino, is breaking down doors to get people that didn't even know the house is on fire.
Fire, I know.
Burning. Fire station's across the street. When these guys get here, you still have to put down those stabilizers, you still have to run the hose to the hydrant, and you still have to raise the ladder up to the window to get people out and save their lives. I think that's insanity to have one firefighter on that truck. I just, I don't understand it. I never understood it. Only that chief and, you know, his predecessors, they lived with it because they were told, this is what you have. I don't, I think we're beyond right now. I think it's dangerous. I really do. And, you know, I look at elders, frankly, I look at myself. I'm not getting down those stairs and out that door. It's not happening. And if that person can't get up to that window to save me, that's it. And, and I'm on the side of town where it's the longest run for those folks to get there. And that's what's always struck me is, how about my neighbors? How about, you know, others? They too pay taxes, they too want protection, they too care about their loved ones. So I, you know, I commend the chief because his original proposal, which frankly, I support, and I know you have, both of you gentlemen, so I'm not taking credit. It's the three of us have. Knowing how things have, we don't know where, what's coming from the state, we don't know where in that regard, he's actually broken it back down to components. And I think he deserves our support. If you look at it, for him to accomplish this, yes, there is an increase, and there's an increase in overtime to ensure that the vehicles are staffed properly. But he's also put some decreases in here as well. You know, I mean, uniform allowance, you know, it's not a huge number, you're talking $15,000. But nevertheless, it's, it's an indication that he worked his way through this budget. As he said, he hasn't taken a single penny more on expenses. He's, you know, worked his way through expenses. Look, I am where I am, and I'll live within that. That's a credit, that's a credit to him as a manager. And all he's saying is, up on the other side of it, I'm not asking for more personnel right now. And I say right now because that's exactly what I mean, and I believe he does, and I believe my colleagues do, that we have to take a look at the fire department as far as our staffing. They do, yes, a lot of EMS runs, and they do, but you know what? I think based on reading the newspaper and getting, I believe there's been like four fires in people's homes since January 1st. Very much, you know? And I just, if we went back and talked to those four families and said, hey, are you grateful for what these ladies and gentlemen did when they came to your home? I think every one of them would say, yes. And they lost, some of them lost everything, but they didn't lose their lives.
Right.
That's the bottom line there. So I, the chief has done, I think, a really, really, truly a great job in working his budget and coming down to, this is where I have to be, and I'll live within it. I think he deserves our support.
Sure does. Like I said, chief, the time you took, and you can tell you had the consideration of the taxpayer and the resident involved when you did this as well, you know, which is, I can see. And I also appreciate the comparison that you put down for us to, you know, almost like a quick look, and we can pick up what you're trying to do. And I thought that was a very, very good, and that you did for us. Anyway, I absolutely got my support in this budget as well. Michael?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, chief, to, you know, you and the deputy chief, I want to say thank you because if you remember, maybe a couple of months ago, and I could be off on my timing, but when we started talking about the budgets, you kind of were like, well, I could use this, but, you know, I understand. And the three of us, the board, looked at you and said, no, you come to us and tell us what you need. And again, I'm going to go back to the safety of the community. I wouldn't know how to hitch a fire hose to a fire hydrant, you know? You need people, personnel trained to do that job, to take care of the citizens. And so I commend you for coming forward and saying, this is what I need to run this department and to, and to provide for the safety and provide the services that are needed in this community. And the services that the fire department provides on a daily basis are widespread. You know, I'm not trying to be funny, but from a cat in a tree to unfortunately somebody that's lost their life, that's a, that's a wide gamut. And so, but, you know, when you look at your budget, a lot of them, it didn't even increase, and some of them, you went down a little bit. But again, it circles back to personnel, and personnel is expensive. But we can't run the department properly with the increase in population if we don't increase the people that are providing the services. So, you know, I'm not going to go on. I think that, you know, the former police chief, Tom O'Laughlin, a board member with me, did a great job explaining it. And all I can say is thank you. And again, sitting here as one member, it's my job to, to get you the tools that you need, the both of you need, to run that department and keep it running as efficient as it does on a daily basis. And so that, you know, the most important thing is that so that we don't skimp and somebody loses their life. Shame on us.
Exactly.
So, thank you very much.
Thank you to Zach.
And Zach, I'm sorry. Thank you. You've got the shot pen.
You're comfortable with the budget, or?
Yeah, yeah, we're looking at about a 6.4% increase. I want to personally thank the two of these gentlemen here, they have cooperated. I applaud those efforts. I know it's not where they want it to be. This one also isn't where it started, but we're all trying to cooperate in what seemingly is a difficult situation. And this does seem to be, I'm comfortable with it, they seem to be comfortable. I think we're ready to move forward.
And this one has the contractual.
This one is settled, yes.
As well, right?
Yep.
You know, and with the, I was going to say, Mr. Jim, when, you know, if we take a look at the number of apartment buildings we've built in the past several years.
Buildings, really?
And when we look at the number that are being built, and when you look at a ladder truck, you know, I don't think I'd want to rent the apartment on the fourth floor with one firefighter showing up on a ladder truck.
My biggest concern too, when, with you, only one man on a ladder truck.
I would make a motion that we support the police and fire budgets.
Great, thank you.
I would gladly second that, Mr. Chairman.
Make that unanimous. Thanks. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, really.
Thanks. Good job.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks.
Thank you every day. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Good to see you, chief. Good to see you, deputy. Good to see you. Good job.
Okay. Now we're moving right along. We have another appointment here with our finance director and our town administrator, Richard Valani. He'll be presenting to us a review of the FY 25 budgets with the board.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
There are a number of budgets there. I really only want to highlight two.
Okay.
Because the rest of them, I think Zach will attest to, are, they increased, it was either due to contractual obligations or step increases for hourly and salary employees. First one is 174, the town planner. Obviously, you see a significant increase. I think the board knows exactly why that is. We added a position, the economic development planner position. So it's not a big budget, only has one salary in it. Now we have two. I also want, as the board also knows, we did reduce the general government 122 category by much more than what we're going to pay this person. So there's a net savings of about $30,000. So again, it's a staggering number, it's an overall 86, 87% increase, but in reality, we've kind of lessened that. In conjunction with that, because you're going to have another person, the expenses went up a little bit. Got to have a desk, got to have a computer, you got to have, you know, those things that are needed.
Equipment for them.
For the position. So that's why you see an increase there. The planning board budget itself is increasing a little bit, and the only reason there is that we are in the And the only reason there is that we are in the process, as Paul, you know, the completion of the comprehensive plan. There's going to be some additional printing costs.
Absolutely.
Communication to the public, public meetings. So there is a small increase. When I say small, it's $4,000. But again, with such a small budget, the percentage looks, looks off. But it's not. And then the final one, again, under that same umbrella, is the Economic Development Commission. As you know, it has a small budget of 3,000. We just thought we'd increase that to 2,000 because we want the position, the planner one, to be active, but we want the commission to be active. They may want to do surveys. They may want to send out flyers. So we're just adding, again, a couple thousand dollars, again, because it's such a small budget. It looks like it's more than it really is.
Reasonable, very reasonable.
So, and the only other one I really want to highlight, unless the Board has any questions of that, is Council on Aging. Zach and I met with Lisa Reagan. She is our new Senior Center Director. She's doing a tremendous job. I want to compliment her here. She has made a request. Her original request was two part-time positions to go to full-time. And the reason for that is, and she's got a litany of things, but basically, the growth has been exponential in programming, weekly classes, and just a number of seniors going through the door every day. She understands that, you know, these aren't the best of times for us. So what we've agreed to, and I think what she is going to agree to and will agree to, is taking one program coordinator that is currently part-time, it will now be not quite full-time, but 30 hours.
So it's adding hours to someone that's already there.
Already there. The one, obviously, the one downside to that, it could result in.
Some benefits.
Health, health, health insurance benefits, et cetera. So, but that's the only other one that you'll see somewhat of a change too. Again, the rest, if you have any questions, Zach, I'm sure, could address them probably.
Yeah, no, I said.
I want to thank him and my assistant, Liz, for the assistance in preparing the budgets.
And I can see with the Council on Aging too, Rick, that place is very, very busy.
You've been down there.
Yeah, extremely busy.
For whatever programming and what have you.
And just to address, and just to try to address that, you know, in, in, in increase in use, to just add a few hours more to somebody that's already there, that's not asking too much.
Yeah, and again, her, she did cooperate also. Her original request was two part-timers to two full-timers. And right now, he said, we will look at this this year, and then we'll see what next year brings.
See what happens.
Right. If there's anything else, I'd be happy to.
Rick, did you want to mention the stormwater position?
Oh, I'm sorry. One other in the Planning and Engineering. I'm not sure that's in here, but we are looking to add a stormwater engineer that would work both with the Highway Surveyor, Scott Christofouli, and the Town Engineer, Liz Minini. Scott will probably be presenting that to FinCom and, but it is a position that we now, I think we're there, unfortunately. There has to be some discussion of a stormwater utility down the road.
Yep.
And there is being a mounted pressure to start that type of position, and we need someone.
Like you say, it's not a luxury, it's, it's a necessity.
Yeah, and.
It's not from, from the federal government's really putting a lot of pressure.
Personnel Board has approved, has approved the position, the job description, et cetera. Will be a salary position. I want to say it's step grade nine, but I'm not sure off the top of my head. So, but that also will be coming, and that will be in, increasing the, I guess they're going to put that, will we put that in the engineering?
For 11.
In the, in the department, so.
Thank you for that. Tom and Mike, any?
That'll be an increase also.
Just the Senior Center, you know, it is thriving, and it is, it's coming back. And when we consider, we're not that far out of COVID as far as seniors go, you know? And they were isolated. When we talk about impacts of health and welfare.
Right.
I tell you, there's, you only have to read literature or watch the news, and you know the impacts upon not only schoolchildren, but the elderly.
The elderly as well.
Who were isolated.
That's right.
Isolated even from family. And, and the impacts were significant. So to bring seniors back in, to bring them, the socialization, and the center's doing it. They're bringing back all of the events that every one of us.
It's unbelievable.
Have been involved in and been to. Every single department head. You know, when you look at the Thanksgiving dinner, and you look at, you know, we just went past it, but they did St. Patrick's, and it was pick up and go.
Right.
You know, so they're doing, they're starting to come back with, they're going to do it in person, and that's huge. But the fact that they kept certain things going, even pick up and go, is really a lifeline more than it was just a meal.
Exactly.
The ability to see others, to communicate even for a few minutes is, you know, so when I look at that, you know, we talk about putting people that deal with crisis in different other agencies and other departments. Why not the Senior Center somewhere? And all it is is being a good, decent human being and being there, and that's what they have there. The services they offer today, I sit on the, you know, Council on Aging, because the services they offer today is incredible.
Sure is.
You know, it started with Sue, and it's just expanding leaps and bounds. I mean, and some of it is dealing with demographics. So it's, you know, what are people looking for? I mean, you can go down there and do fitness, and I mean, you name it.
Yeah, no matter what.
And it occurs every single day.
A lot of activities there to keep you going.
You know, I would encourage people to partake, become involved in the Senior Center, but I, I support them. I, I think we owe that to our seniors.
Sure do. Michael?
I think it's interesting that we're talking about the Senior Center because I just had this conversation with somebody over the weekend. I came around the corner of the Senior Center on St. Patrick's Day, and the parking lot was jammed, and the street was jammed. The first thing I thought of was, oh my gosh, I missed the St. Patrick's Day luncheon that we work at every year. And I'm like, oh, how'd that get by you? And the long and the short was, I bumped into some of the volunteers there, and they said, oh, no, 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 that's daily. I said, daily? And they said, yes. And, and basically what it is, is the ask of the senior citizens today is different than maybe 10 years ago. And it's, it's, to Tom's point, it's fitness, it's, you know, running computers, it's just a lot of different programs that the, you know, the seniors today are asking for, that get provided there. And that Senior Center is, according to this volunteer, and I witnessed it on one day, is booming. It's booming. And so again, it goes back to providing the services that the seniors of this community are asking us for.
I couldn't agree more. Zach?
Yeah, so overall, you may recall, I presented a budget to you that I said, quote unquote, was a ideal budget, and that I knew a lot of additional asks were going to come in. That ideal budget was around 151 million. We're down to about 152 right now, about 900,000 over that quote unquote ideal budget. Before that, we were probably around $4 million over that budget. So a real lot of work's been done with a lot of department heads. I'd like to do a little bit more. I've got some departments in mind that I'm working with right now, but long and short of it, we're looking pretty good. We're getting to where we need to be, and I'm feeling pretty good about it at this time.
Great job.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for that.
So all the departments that weren't presented, now they're gone.
Yeah.
I mean, okay.
I should, I'm coming.
Glad I'm all done.
I know how you queue things up. Okay.
Anyway, thank you, Zach.
Thank you.
Zach, thanks a lot.
Thanks, Zach. Does a great job, and has done a great job.
Your input.
Best.
You know.
Best.
Your input is critical.
Thank you.
Take care, my friend, for sure.
Okay. Next on the agenda is an attached list.
I just make a motion that we're going to support the town budgets as presented by the Town Administrator.
Oh, sure.
And I gladly second that, Mr. Chairman.
Make that unanimous. Thank you, Tom and Michael. Next on the agenda is a, is a list of the seasonal Town Administrator.
Just doesn't like to go to me, does he?
Oh. I thought very, you know what? Because I already went to you.
Your last is care.
Because I already went to you, that's why.
Oh, I like it.
You were talking already.
I like it. Really, two quick items. Just want to, as the Board knows, we've been involved, the state has, with the opioid litigation. So I just want to update you on the status of it that was filed by the Massachusetts Opioid Litigation Attorneys. Basically, settlements have been entered into by the state with Walmart, Walgreens, and CVS, and others. To date, the town has actually received just $255,742.70. As the Board knows, it's the intent of the settlement agreements that 100% of the annual payment be used for opioid remediation as defined in the settlement agreements. There's some certain minor exceptions. So Zach, if he were still here, would tell you that the funds are placed in a special revenue fund by the Finance Director, and obviously, we'll be reaching to the police chief and to Amy Leoni from.
Very good.
Chris's Corner. So I just wanted to bring you up to date on that.
Right.
And then one just quick note on the Municipal Energy Aggregation Plan. I along with the Select Board Chair, Paul Mazicelli, we attended the DPU public hearing today at 2:00 PM via Zoom. It was very brief. The purpose of the hearing, as you know, is to allow for the public to comment on the plan. It went very smoothly. There were no issues. So hopefully, we're still targeting the winter of next year for the implementation of the plan, because I know you must get questions, as I do, as to when is it coming?
Sure.
So the public hearing was held today with no issues.
Yeah, we're good. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick.
Any old business?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Michael?
No, Mr. Chairman.
I don't have any either. We'll move on to the new business, which is the list of seasonal club licenses to be renewed. Massbinock Rod and Gun Club on 1 McGill Lane, and Sons of Italy Dramatic and Sportsman Club on 55 Depot Street.
Jim, I make a motion that we approve seasonal club licenses renewals for 2024 for Massbinock Rod and Gun Club, Inc., 1 McGill Lane, the Sons of Italy Dramatic and Sportsman Club, Inc., 55 Depot Street.
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
Make that unanimous. Thank you. Also, we have a memo from our Treasurer, Chris Pillar, updating the Board on foreclosure option on property at 41 Beaver Street. I guess it's something that the town's been trying to work with the owner since April 2nd, 2021. They made some progress, and now I guess they're going to go to the step of a foreclosure. We all had a chance to read the, the letter. Again, it's at 41 Beaver Street, and things are progressing with that. That's just an update he wanted to give us.
Yeah, we actually did work with the owner. He has been relocated to a, to a new home. We now have the property, so it's going to go to public auction.
Right.
That's where we're at at this point.
Okay. And like I said, there was a question that, when that first came up, with whether the occupant or the owner did have alternative housing.
And it's all been taken care of.
Good.
Yeah.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the decision that was made on a dog hearing, a case with the Town of Milford versus Dora Gisela Mendez. Rick, can you comment on that?
Yeah, we had a hearing on March 18th. The complainant is actually the Town of Milford through the Animal Control Officer. We had an original hearing back in July of 2016, and a certain order was entered relative to the owner of a, one dog at that point. And the order was pretty much that the dogs needed to be on leash when outside, they needed to be controlled on when they were inside the home. And unfortunately, there have been at least 15 violations of the order since that date. I'm not going to go through the whole complaint, decision, but there were 15 videos that I looked at that showed the dogs, not only just off the property, but charging at neighbors, charging at a UPS driver. So we did have a second hearing. Testifying was the Animal Control Officer. The videos were entered into evidence, and the owner of the dog's husband did appear. He really had no defense. He just indicated that he was sorry and they would do better. The other problem we had is the dogs were not properly licensed, nor the rabies vaccines. There was no proof of that. The other issue was there was numerous, numerous citations for off-leash entered into evidence, and none of those have been paid in excess of over $3,000. So if you get out to the findings of fact, basically, there are three dogs. I found that all, unfortunately, are nuisance dogs. None are licensed, no proof of rabies vaccine. 15 separate occasions that they were either in the neighbor's yard, or in a second neighbor's yard, or on the street. They were barking and growling in a menacing, menacing manner. A number of citations were issued, all of which have been ignored to date. The order, which was helped, prepared by the Animal Control Officer and myself, there is a fencing requirement, there is an outdoor kennel requirement, there is a leash requirement, there is a license and vaccination requirement. They must provide certifications of vaccination, which is required. There's, any dogs owned by them should not be allowed outside from 9:00 PM to 8:00 AM. If they do need to go out, an adult member must accompany those dogs. We're looking for reimbursement of the fines. And unfortunately, this is something I have not had to do since I was appointed the Animal Control Dog Hearing Officer. We're looking to have them, right now, surrender all three dogs to the care and custody of the Animal Control Officer. They will be housed there at the expense of the dog owner. Once all of these conditions are in place, we would be willing to then return to the care and custody of Mrs. Mendez, all three dogs. Should she fail to comply with this, we do understand, after speaking with Town Counsel, who was also the former dog hearing officer, that we will need to petition the court to request an empowerment. So not going to just go in and take them. We're hoping she'll voluntarily.
Give her an opportunity.
Put them there. Again, somewhat extreme, but we feel, the Animal Control Officer and myself, and again, the neighbors have been through quite a lot.
I guess so.
Have a young daughter.
Yep, very well written too, Ricky. Thank you.
So we'd be looking for the Board to adopt the order, and then Town Counsel will then, and I will proceed from there.
Okay. Before we do that, any, Board members have any questions or comments you want to make? If not, entertain a motion to accept this, the order?
Very thorough. I make a motion that we approve the order of Animal Control Hearing Officer as written.
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
Make that unanimous as well. Ricky, thanks for that.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is Invitation to Speak. There was no one. And we do have a correspondence on our next item on the agenda. It's from MIFM Media. It was addressed to our Town Administrator, Richard Valani, and it's from Dick Ferrucci from the radio station, where he's requesting that the Select Board to proclaim Louisa Lake ought to be off limits for fishing for a period of time preceding our annual free fishing derby for all kids on April 20th, 2024. The Mass Division of Fisheries and Wildlife will be delivering up to 1,000 trout that day and before the derby. Many times in the past, the lake has been fished out prior to our event, and the number of fish caught seemed to be going down each year. As I mentioned, this derby is completely free for kids from the entire region. It is great morning, filled with families, donuts, milk, juice, T-shirts, trophies, prizes, and more. He just wants to ensure that we have the fish. And that's, you know, very unfair, you know, for, you know, it's, it's a free event. They deliver up to 1,000 trout, and once people hear that that's going to be going on, they fish and take all the, and most of the fish, so the kids fishing don't have any fish to catch. And like I said, it's unfair, and he's looking for us to at least consider making this period for fishing off limits during that time.
I make a motion that we approve his request and notify, he's already sent a copy to the police chief, but notify the police chief and the Dogs Commission.
Good. I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
Make that unanimous too. Thanks, Tom and Mike. Make that unanimous, too, thanks, Tom and Mike. And we had our executive session earlier, therefore, anybody else have any comments or things to say prior to an adjournment, if not, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Chairman, I make a motion to adjourn.
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
That unanimous, thank you, and good evening, everybody. Thank you for tuning us in to your home, and have a great night. Thank you.